Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you physically present in the council chamber, if you desire to address the city council during this meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the entrance and presented to our city clerk. Speakers physically present and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes speaking time. I will, at this time, call to order the regular meeting of the City of Grand Terrace for February Tonight, our invocation will be given by Mayor Pro Tem Bill Hesse, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance immediately after. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. God, thank you for gathering us here tonight. Do your will, God. Just give us the wisdom and the guidance so we may make correct decisions for this city, so the city and all its residents will prosper. Lord, I just ask that you protect our first responders, and, Lord, I ask that you protect our men and women in the military and be it the people of Ukraine as the crisis going on there. God, thank you for everything, and God bless Grand Terrace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles?
Hi, I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hesse?
Present.
Mayor McNebo?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you. We have no special presentations either, so we'll move to our consent calendar, remembering that the consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Do we have any requests for removal of items on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I will ask if there is a motion for the consent.
I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Robles to approve the consent calendar items, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Hesse. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hesse?
Yes.
Mayor McNebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And our next item is public comment on, for items not on the regular agenda. Do we have any requests to speak on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I will close public comment. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. And our first item of new business is a real estate property to be considered. This is a area of property in the city that I have recused myself from conversations in, when it was being discussed in closed session. So at this time, I will, I will recuse myself since where I live is within proximity to this, to this property and to be discussed, and so Mayor Pro Tem Hesse will take over this item of business, and I will leave the chambers. I will be back once the council has made their determination on this item.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's going to be item number seven, acceptance of donation of real property, APN 0276-213-47000. Generally located in the intersection of Preston Street and Barton Road from Angelina Pettah, trustee, family trust of Anthony Pettah and Angelina Pettah, AKA Pettah Trust, dated May 10th, 2012, and presenting this item of your city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. This item is to request the city council accept a donation of real property. The family trust of Anthony Pettah and Angeline Pettah currently owns the property with the Ms. Pettah is the trustee of the family trust. The property is generally located at the intersection of Preston and Barton Road, and Ms. Pettah has agreed to donate the property to the city. No specific purpose is required. She did suggest concepts like a library, a police station, a performing arts center, but she, in speaking with the council subcommittee, which I'll invite them to speak shortly, gave that discretion to the city council to make a determination as what the best use would be for the best interests of the city and its residents. Obviously, the price, there is no price. It is being donated to the city for $0, but the appraised value is $750,000. The city will pay for all costs of closing and a title insurance policy. City is required to deposit $1,000 for this purpose. We will note that, under state law, any acquisition of property must go through the general plan conformance finding requirement, so assuming the city council were to approve this item tonight, this matter would be taken to the planning commission so that they can, again, find that the acceptance of the property is consistent with the general plan. And, again, given that, that there is no specific purpose for use of the property at this point in time, there should be no issue in that respect. So tonight, if acceptable to the planning commission, or, I'm sorry, to the city council, we are recommending that they adopt the resolution that is attached to the staff report. I am going to ask for one revision to the resolution. The resolution provides for a few items. Let me pull it up. It is on page, packet page 120. And essentially, we are accepting their donation, and in section four, we're authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. What I will add to section four is that the city manager is also authorized to take any and all actions necessary to effectuate this transaction. So, because there may be other documents that he may have to sign in furtherance of accepting the property. So I'm going to ask the mayor pro tem and the council as part of your motion to accept that revision to the, that addition to the resolution. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor pro tem for any questions of the council, and I would also ask maybe the council subcommittee of council members Wilson and Allen, who participated in these discussions, if they wanted to provide any input as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. We'll open up for questions for the council. Questions? Do we have any public comment for this?
No, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, we'll bring it out to the discussion. Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Allen, you have anything to add? You guys are on the subcommittee.
No, I just would like to publicly acknowledge the generosity from the Pettah family and thank them for their, their gift to the city.
Councilmember Wilson?
I, too, would like to acknowledge their generosity. You know, in the long run, this is something that is completely in keeping with the Pettah family. As you know, Tony Pettah was a, you know, was in on the formation of the city, and, of course, is, all the way through his death, he was a supporter. His wife continues to be the same way. They're forward thinkers, and this particular doing the, doing the research on this property to help them get to this point, this has been at least 40 years in the tooth, which, to me, is just incredible to be that much of a forward thinker and to, and to be, to set up the, this kind of an exchange. That just shows you how dedicated the Pettah family has been all the way through the years to the, the progress of the city. So we can use more like them. They're just fantastic people, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add, too, you know, what a beautiful gift for their vision that they had, like you said, you know, four decades ago, even more, and keeping that promise that they did to each other, and, you know, and this gift is going to affect every, well, benefit for every resident here in Grand Terrace, and that's what's beautiful about it. You know, it's prime real estate, you know, their trust could have made a lot of money, like you said, but they decided to keep their promise and their dedication to the city like they always have, you know. Pettahs have done a lot of work for this city and helped, you know, establish the city and, and, you know, just the beautiful lady, you know, just, you know, kept going and going and going, even a historical society. So what a beautiful thing that they're offering the residents of the city, so. Any other discussions? I will close the discussion and bring it back for a vote. Our recommendation. Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I'd like to move the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution. If I, do I need to read it?
No, you could just say move the, the recommended resolution.
I'd like to move the recommendation and the resolution.
I'd like to second that.
With the additional revision, is?
With the revision that Mr. City Attorney added.
Great, thank you.
And the second concurs.
Thank you.
All right, I have a, only by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Do you want to read it?
No, not necessary, not necessary for a resolution.
All right, Madam City Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yee-hoo, yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hesse?
Yes.
Madam Mayor has recused herself. The motion passes.
Thank you. I guess we'll, there you go. It's all yours, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate you taking that item. Move to item number eight, which is approval of an agreement for purchase and sale of real estate and joint escrow instructions with San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, APNs 1167-231-10 and 1167-231-22, in the amount of $141,000, property generally located at intersection of Barton Road and Commerce Way. Mr. City Attorney Adrian Garrett will give us a staff report.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item is to, for the council to consider acquisition of property with the APN numbers 1167-2031-10 and 1167-2037-22. The property is generally located, oh, go back, the staff report supports goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships by allowing the city to purchase the property from SBCTA. The property is generally located at the intersection of Barton Road and Commerce Way. If approved tonight, the agreement will allow the city to purchase the property for SBCTA will pay for half of the customary escrow fees, the cost of title, insurance policy, and any document preparation costs for documents prepared on their behalf. The city will pay their share of the escrow fees, any documentary transfer tax, any additional title coverage or endorsements that the city desires, and any document preparation done on our behalf. Escrow opens on the date the escrow holder receives, executes, and dates acceptance of the fully executed copy of the agreement. The city will have to deposit $4,230 within 10 days of escrow opening. Escrow will close approximately 30 days after opening, unless extended, and must close with the recordation of a grant deed, with certificate of acceptance, and a copy is included in the agenda packet. If the agreement is approved, then the city will pay $141,000. The city will also pay escrow fees and closing costs as a fiscal impact. I did want to note that if the city were to sell the property at some point in the future, the sale of the property will be subject to the Surplus Land Act, as we've discussed in the past. Surplus Land Act is a, a state law that requires any sale of land by a public agency to be made available to affordable housing developers. So it's an opportunity for affordable housing developers to see a property, consider developing that land for property, and make a bid on that property. And there's a whole process where we have to circulate that notice. They have 60 days to reach out to the city and say, hey, I'm interested. There's no requirement that we sell for less than fair market value. It just gives them an opportunity to, to get into the, the mix. So with that, our recommendation is straightforward, approve the agreement for the purchase and sale of the real property, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement subject to city attorney's approval as to form.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
Adrian, the question I have is, is, well, a couple of them. Isn't there a way that we can have the agreement when we do transfer ownership to the new buyer, that they would reimburse us any costs to date for the closings? So it'd be this 4230 or somewhere around that area?
So if we were to sell the property, have the new buyer?
Yes.
Yes, that would probably be something we would discuss if and when we get to that point.
I think, you know, it would be, it would be proper for it to happen. Obviously, the market, it's going to be market-driven, although I'm kind of curious in the overall why we couldn't do, my understanding is, let me back up, my understanding is, is that we have a buyer, or at least somebody that's expressed great interest in it, and it would make sense to them to purchase it. I'm surprised that we didn't do this purchase incident to another purchase for the ultimate owner, because they seem to be pretty much in the queue.
Yes, yes, there is a, a developer who is interested in this property. Efforts were made with SBCTA to sell directly to.
Which you can't do, I understand.
But they were unable to, to do that. So the only way it could be done is if we acquire it.
Right.
But, you know, you have to understand that while we acquire it, we are still subject to the Surplus Land Act, so while we do have, you know, a developer in mind who is interested in purchasing it, there's no guarantee that they will end up the actual buyer, because we have to go through the Surplus Land Act process first.
As I understand that the, in this particular case, we have to do, because of the Surplus Land Act, we have to offer it to an affordable situation, but considering the fact that this thing is in our, our Barton Road specific plan?
Right.
And is already slated for a commercial situation, and is also, you know, dovetailed into two, I'm sorry, two existing uses that would be compatible, I can't imagine that there would be too much pushback. Is there a way that we can get a letter from whoever reviews these things at the state level or whatever that can say, you know, we're not really interested in this? I've seen, I've had that kind of circumstance before, where they started to enact things beginning with the city of Los Angeles, at least in Southern California, and the housing authority had an obligation for something like a 15% affordable. And so we would always approach the housing authority, and it was always the same answer. We're not interested in buying, in building something new. We're really more interested in taking houses and redoing them, or, and maybe, you know, if it's affordable, we'll do that with multifamily. But when it comes to something that really doesn't fit into the neighborhood, then we'll just give you a letter that says we're not interested at the time, and basically, and no objection letter, so that we can move it along a little bit quicker. An intersection is such a key situation, and I know I've talked about our situation with Colton, which is kind of related to it, with the, over the bridge, but that whole mess needs to be, you know, cleared up as soon as possible to make it possible for us to be able to culture a better circumstance for our, you know, our, our main artery. And so, you know, I'd like to get out of the realm of dinking around and waiting for, you know, other procedures, and I'm looking for a path.
Sure. The, the Surplus Land Act does provide certain exemptions from the process. In our review, we don't believe any of the exemptions apply. For example, you know, the zoning, I mean, that tends to be one of the things that buyers will look at. The reality is, is because it is not zoned residential, it isn't surrounded by residential, and the size of the property isn't that big. I can't, I don't think there's going to be any significant interest in, in that property from unaffordable housing. I don't see it. That being said, there's no avenue where we can just avoid going through the Surplus Land Act. We still would have to go through it.
Is there a specific timeframe in?
So, so once we acquire the property, if we're going to move forward with disposition, we would declare it surplus, and then we would issue a notice of availability, which is then circulated for 60 days. We would email it to all affordable housing developers, Department of Housing Community Development at the state level has a website where they have a list of all the, anybody who has an interest in getting these notices. So we would just send an email out, I'm actually going through this with one of my other clients as we speak, where they have an office building, it's worth like, you know, well, it's zoned for office, and it's an office building. The city has even said, there's no way they're changing the zoning. So we don't think there's going to be an affordable housing developer who's going to pay for that land, but we still have to go through the process.
Sure, understand. At least you've given us a, a timeframe that we can.
Yes.
It's, it's not one of those three-year situations or some crazy.
It's 60 days. If we were to get some type of interest from a housing developer, then we would have a 90-day period to negotiate in good faith with them. So that could elongate the, the period, but I'm expecting a 60-day period.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that there's a developer interested in purchasing this land. Have we explained what the process is to this point?
Yes, they are aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Further questions for staff? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll bring it back to council for discussion and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Wilson?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Is there any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hesse?
Yes.
Mayor McNebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number nine, establishment of a planning commission/site and architectural review board alternates. Again, Mr. City Attorney Adrian Garrett.
The trifecta, the third one.
That's right.
All right, so tonight we are talking about alternate members on the planning commission and site architectural review board. I'll be referring to this board as the planning commission for the presentation. So the staff report supports council goal number five, engage in proactive communication by providing further community input on planning matters. On July 28th, 2020, the council approved a future agenda item requested by Mayor McNebo to consider whether the city council can and should appoint alternate members to the planning commission. So, general background, state law requires that the planning commission be at least five members, but it does not provide a maximum number. In fact, state law doesn't even require that a city have a planning commission, interestingly, but most cities do. State law does not address the use of a planning commission alternate system, so this is something that would be unique, but, believe it or not, there are many cities out there that actually have it. Grand Terrace currently has five members on the planning commission. Under the proposed concept, the council would appoint additional members to the planning commission who would serve as alternates to the commission when needed. The alternate members would participate in a meeting if certain criteria to be established by the council would allow them to participate. Examples, a planning commissioner has a conflict of interest that requires recusal, or a regular planning commissioner is unable to attend a meeting due to an illness or some other reason for absence. This alternate commission, commissioner concept appears compliant with state law. Again, there's no restrictions on this concept, no prohibitions, and, again, there's no state law that regulates the number of commissioners on a, on a commission. So the implementation of this process, as we see it, would be consistent with state law. So sampling from other cities, San Marcos, Avalon, Calabasas, Milopitas, Carson, Coachella, Piedmont, and Dublin all have an alternate system, and we just took some others as nose, Riverside, Colton, Fontana, La Malinda, Rialto, San Bernardino, Redland, and Moreno Valley. I would tell you, in my experience, this was the first time I was actually looking into this. In my 20 years, I had never seen this, so I was like, oh, I can't imagine there's any out there. Well, we found some, and apparently there are. So, you know, it's an interesting concept, and there are some policy issues to consider should we move towards this. The first one, whether alternates need to attend every planning commission meeting in case the planning commissioners suddenly determines they're unavailable. The number of alternate planning commissioners. The term of alternate planning commissioners, are they going to be consistent with other members? Are we going to stagger them somehow? The compensation, do they get compensated only if they're actually participating in the meeting, or do they get compensated just because they're an alternate? The method for selection of alternate commissions when needed. So if you have four commissioners, which one gets selected if we need one? So those are just initial concepts. I mean, I think the biggest one that we have to address is, again, if the council is interested in doing this, is what triggers would require the participation of an alternate? Would it be somebody sick, but they're going to be returning at the next meeting and, and they'll be available? They have a conflict? You know, those are the triggers we're going to have to identify if we move forward with this. So the next steps are tonight to consider whether you, the council wishes to implement this process, and if we do, then we would need to prepare an ordinance and bring that for city council consideration. So with that, turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your research on this. Are there questions of our city attorney at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, Mr. City Attorney, I wanted to ask you about the last little bit of information you put up there, the cities that have alternates and those with no alternates.
Yes.
And on page 147, it actually shows this list, and then it has those five bullet points that you brought out that need to be considered, whether the alternates need to attend, and the number of them, and their compensation, and this sort of thing. So those entities, jurisdictions that do have alternates, how do they compensate? Do they require their planning commissioner alternates to come to all the planning commission meetings? Do they, you know, I mean, how do they, these five bullet comments, how do, how do they address them?
We, we didn't go into that level of depth of the analysis at this point. We want to make sure, see what the council wanted to do, and then we can go through that analysis. I will tell you that Carson is one of our other clients, and they actually just had this question come up of how do they decide who gets selected? So some of this isn't fleshed out. They have it in the code, but it really isn't fleshed out as to all these issues. So we would have to go and find out and go do a little more research on, with respect to each one.
Which would beg the question that Carson obviously hasn't even used their alternates, or they would have resolved these, answered these questions that have come about.
Correct.
I wonder, in the past, in my memory, I can't recall a time that we would have needed an alternate on our planning commission. I don't know, you know, and not, I can only think back like five or six or eight years, but, so anyway, it, that's, that's all my, that was the only question I had for now. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Further questions of staff? All right, seeing none, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to, to council for discussion. I will, I will make mention of why I brought this forward for us to consider. It was during a time when I understand our planning commission was having a difficult time having a quorum, and we had a project that was having a difficult time being heard, and so the thought to me was, well, if we're, if we're canceling meetings because we don't have a quorum because of recusals or, or people not coming, that, that perhaps it would be a good idea to have an alternate that could then fulfill the, not only fulfill the quorum aspect of it, but then further, if it is somebody that is coming and paying attention at planning commission meetings for the duration of time until we have another vacancy, that means when we go to choose somebody to, to replace a planning commissioner who has stepped down or is. or is unable to serve anymore, we have somebody that has some history with what the planning commission's been working on. So, those were my reasons at the time for bringing it forward. However, there may be alternate solutions to that as well. But tho- those were the, that was the thinking at the time when I asked us to consider this. Any further discussion? Mayor Pro Tem?
No, I, I agree 100% because, since being on the council, I don't know how many times we would pick a commissioner, and then next thing I know, we're picking another one, you know, they're not staying. I know the pay's not all that great, but you know, we're doing this for our city, but I understand people have different things come up in their life and stuff where they have to leave, or, you know, jobs, or health, or family matters. But, you know, I agree too, you know, I don't want, like you, it's disappointing when we're trying to move forward. I mean, just like this project we just approved right now for, you know, the property on Barton. And then also, you know, we don't have the alternates because something, I mean, we don't have the commission because something happened. You know, I mean, then I'm thinking, well, does it just, if that doesn't, if they can't get a quorum, you know, should it just automatically go to the city council? But then, you know, we're defeating what the purpose of the planning commission's for. So, no, I agree 100% on, you know, the logic behind it and stuff. And, you know, we, we do need to keep moving forward, and, and like I said, people's life changes, and we don't know what's going on. And, you know, we can't hold that against them on that. And, but, you know, just when you come, I have been on boards when, working overtime and stuff, and coming to the board and showing up and doing what you're supposed to be, then all of a sudden we have no quorum. It's like, well, I did all this stuff, and nobody's here, you know, it's, you know, it's, and then it's, I don't want to say it's waste of your time, but it takes away the time for your family and stuff. So, no, I agree with you 100% on that.
Further discussion? Councilmember Robles?
Yeah, I agree that we at least need one person. If, if the, the majority wants two, then we stagger them with, with whatever people have the most seasoning on there. And then obviously, if there is a vacancy, the most, those who are staggering with precedence would, would fill the seat. Because we, we've had difficulty, and then we're such a small city, with that 500 feet, that could be problematic when we really get going on development. So, that's, that's my input on that.
All right. Councilmember Allen?
What if we had a, a planning commission and site and architectural review board that was, I don't know, more, like six or seven members in that way? If there was someone who had to recuse themselves because a project was within the limits of their space, there would still be enough people to have a quorum. I mean, we, there's nothing that restrict, tells, there's nothing that says that we're restricted to having only five members on the planning commission. I mean, if we're going to have an alternate, and the alternate's going to stay abreast of the issues, and they're going to be compensated, and they're going to sit out here, and they're going to go for months and months and months and months sitting out here listening and never get to vote on anything and never get to participate, just sit out here hoping somebody gets sick or goes on vacation, you know? Maybe if we just had six or seven members instead of five, if that's what you're looking for, is to always be able to have a quorum. If you're going to have to pay them anyway, that way you get some use out of them, and they'll feel like they're being used.
No one's saying we have to pay them. No one's saying we have to pay them at the same rate as a, as a planning commissioner. I mean, maybe there's some compensation, but I think that there's value in having somebody that's paying attention to what the planning commission is doing, even if they're not voting on it. Would there be anything that would say that an alternate wouldn't be able to, to partake in discussion on an item?
If they are not, if they are not on the dais, I would say no. Because, again, it, it's only those people making the decision that their decision would be on the record.
So, they could speak during public comment?
They could speak.
Like anybody else?
Correct. Yes.
Further discussion? Councilmember Wilson?
It would, it would seem to me that it would be important to get as many volunteers in the fray as we can. In the 21 years that I was involved in the planning commission, we really never ran into a circumstance where there was a, a hiccup in the process because of that. But then that, that stems around good communication in the long run. You know, if they're keeping it to themselves, that they're either going to bow out, or, or they've got a vacation plan, and they just didn't want to make any waves, or whatever, that makes no sense in a, in a primarily voluntary circumstance. So, I think it is, is good to have, say, two alternates. And when, what kind of timeframe are we looking at to answer the questions in relation to the facilitation of the planning commission, or the alternate circumstance?
Well, we could, if the council direction is to move forward with this concept, we could do a little more research to see how those specific cities are doing it. And then we could bring back an analysis of those issues and some recommendations.
Councilmember Robles?
One last question. So, a quorum is a sliding scale based on number of people, right? So, you're not really solving anything by ha- you've still got to have a quorum based on the number of, of people participating.
Correct. So, I mean, if you have five members, quorum is three. If you have seven, quorum is four. And so, really, the question is, is do you want to ensure that every decision has a minimum of five? Or are you comfortable with four? Because in the situation that the mayor was discussing earlier, we had the situation, I think, three council members or commissioners had a conflict, if I remember correctly. And, and so then, you would have to draw straws under the Political Reform Act for one of them to come back and participate, just to get a quorum. By having alternates, you would have basically eliminate the need to draw straws, and you would just bring two other, two others in. And then the other question is, do you bring in only that number to make a quorum, or do you bring it to bring back the full five? That, those are the policy questions that.
All part of what would come back to us.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
All right. All good discussion. What, what would we like to do with this item?
Well, I, I think, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, I think maybe if getting some information back via the city attorney about what others, what has been the response and, in other cities and jurisdictions that use this concept? And how's it worked out for them? And what recommendations do they have to proceed forward? If, you know, based on their experiences? And they can bring that back to us and report. That's what I'd like to, to get from the city attorney.
All right.
If that was a motion?
Was that a motion? That was a motion for us to give direction to staff to go and, and review some policy issues that are in place in other cities and come back to us with something to consider? Is that what your motion was?
It, that's absolutely what, if you understood it correctly.
All right. And is that what you're seconding? Councilmember Wilson?
Second concurs.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, please, if you would, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hussey?
Yes.
And Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, item number 10, direct staff to engage in community outreach and education relating to a proposed ballot measure to establish a transit occupancy tax. Mr. City Manager Conrad Bolowich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. And in respecting the, the efficient and brief nature of this meeting, I'll, I'll follow along in that path. This really is, it, it does support the vision statement. Goal three, promotes economic development by developing proactive programs to attract new business. Goal four, to ensure fiscal viability by identifying new sources of revenue. Goal five, by encourage, engaging in proactive communications to keep the citizens informed of the issue. We currently have a developer who is in the process of developing a piece of property, which will probably include a hotel, somewhere between 70 and 100 rooms. The city, just because we've never had a reason to, has had a transit occupancy tax. Typically, cities that have hotels have some form of taxation for hotel users, a guest tax or room tax. They run from about seven and a half to 14%. The tax in this region is about 10% from the, the neighboring cities, and that seems to be about the average throughout the state. Typically, only paid by the, by, by the person at the, the hotel, and usually their, the reason is, is to offset, you know, the additional impacts of having, you know, people passing through town and kind of aggregating that many people in one place. So, with that, staff is, is going to come back to council with a proposal to put a transit occupancy tax on the ballot for the, the November election. To do that, and to make sure that our voters are informed of all the, the issues surrounding this, and to make sure that it's, it's, it's clean and clear, we would like to engage either a public relations or campaign consulting service to work with us on getting the message out, making, through messaging mailers and public meetings, that we get this message clearly out to the voters so that they're, they're fully informed on this. And what we're looking for is for council direct staff to gather proposals to bring back to you so that we can get this moving.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolowich. Questions at this time for our city manager? All right. Seeing none. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and consideration of a motion.
Motion approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Robles. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none.
Thank you.
May we have a vote? Madam City Clerk, thank you very much for your report. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hussey?
Yes.
And Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. So, we have no request for future agenda items. We'll move to city council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
I don't have anything to report on this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
We did attend a dinner here recently, and had an opportunity to find out a little more information about the redistricting and the impacts from the redistricting. Plan on, I don't know about the rest of the, rest of the members, but I plan on attending more of these deals to try to accomplish one of our goals, and that is to indoctrinate ourselves into the bigger picture. And so, you know, because there's got to be a way we're going to put that chairlift up on Blue Mountain, so.
We have to get funding to pay for it, right?
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the, the League of Cities Inland Division meeting, and I also am the League of Cities President's appointee for governance, transparency, and labor relations. And just very quickly, two items that would be of interest to you is on the Brown Act. They're working to have cities be able to work the way we have during the declared state of emergency on having public meetings on Zoom. And there was a very lively discussion from a lot of the larger cities that they've had city council meetings where people who are posing to be constituents that have IPS address from the Philippines are participating in public comment. So, there is a, a lot of input on that, and it opened my eyes to an issue I hadn't considered. There was also the issue that I had faced, that you're a person alone in a, a city, and you're supposed to post the agenda if you're going to participate remotely. So, they're looking at all those issues, and, and so that's going to be on the work plan for that committee. Another is having to do with there's going to be a proposed requirement that city council members attend a mandated course about two to three hours on financial competency for city budgets. And there was a lot of discussion on that. Maybe it's something that cities should do organically rather than have a mandate. And those are the two things that I think would be of interest to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you know, I want to apologize to Little League because I won't be there for March 5th opening ceremony, and I know they're dedicating Kyle Baconfield, and I was his coach, so. So, I just want to apologize for that. And then I attended the League of Cities with my Councilmember Robles, Councilmember Wilson, and it was at the San Bernardino Airport. You know, when I drove to the airport, you know, of course, a lot of flashbacks. It used to be Norton Air Force Base, you know, seeing where the old commissary, and then, of course, the Burger King's no longer there and stuff. And, but it's actually pretty nice, the terminals, and it'd be nice, you know, if we had commercial flights there instead of, you know, going Ontario, because the terminal is really nice. And so, it was really neat. But the thing that got me, you know, they gave the agenda items and people in their special groups, like Councilmember Robles, along with the tax revenue. And we already know this is going to happen, but I guess the governor's going to postpone the mandatory gas tax in July. I still keep projects going with the surplus money the state has for the freeways, and then the next gas tax, he'll go ahead and double it. So, that's what they were talking about there. So, it could be good news, bad news, is how you vote for Proposition 6. Either way, it's going to get doubled. So, so that was, really stood out, you know, because I, it's the pet peeve there, but you know, it's just when they talk about surplus money, and we had that money, but at least they're still doing their projects and stuff. So, I'll just leave my opinion at that. But anyway, it was a great time there, and then, like I said, it'd be nice to see that San Bernardino Airport, you know, just flourish. I mean, even be like Palm Springs or something, you know, baby steps. But it was really neat, the inside of there. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My report will be very brief. For anybody that is traveling to the Redlands area, just be aware that SBCTA is testing their aero passenger rail trains. And so, for tracks that have long not had any train traffic on them, when you see tracks, think train. And, and please beware, MetroLink has already been testing their, their trains all the way out into Redlands, so that's a really exciting thing to have happen. Further than that, OmniTrans and SBCTA meetings will, will be the first week in March, so I'll have more of a report at our next meeting. And that will do it for me. Mr. City Manager, do you have any communications for us?
Yeah, real briefly, as Mayor Pro Tem Hussey said, Little League opening day is the, the 5th, and to fill out that weekend on the 6th is the Blue Mountain Hike, which, which we're working with all our agencies, sheriffs, fire, and a lot of, a lot of the great community volunteers to put that together. We're really excited about that. And then, at the dog park in the middle of March will be closed for four to six weeks as we're reseeding that and getting that grass to grow up nice again for the, the summertime and use there. So, starting about the middle of month, we'll have to do something. Take your dogs someplace else because the park will be closed.
Are, are you posting something on the, the gates?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it posted on the gates. I just wanted to put it in this form, that people can know about it. Yeah.
No, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We have no closed session tonight, and so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.